Welcome to the Board of Selectmen Sewer Commissioners October 19th meeting. All members of President, Siobhan's going to be a few minutes late. I'd like to first thank, and I'm sure the board will agree, thank all the residents in town that came out to vote, came to the informational meetings, came to town meeting. However you voted, however you stood, thank you for being involved. The police project did pass. We will be moving forward with the project, and I'm sure Mr. Hadley will have updates as we go on with the board. But thank you very much for coming out to vote, and the informational meetings were great, helped us answer all the questions before town meeting, and then we had some new questions at town meeting, but thank you. I'm sure all the board members would agree with that.
Absolutely.
First item on the agenda is public comments. Is there anybody who can step forward and identify yourself, sir? You don't have to worry about the mic, they'll pick you up.
Craig Shibley, Two Lost Overd. Having prepared statement, just a follow-up. Tonight marks the third appearance before this board to discuss Semlek and two fraternal organizations associated with the town's police department. My first visit occurred in January, and I followed-up happened only a month ago. To date, this process has been painfully slow and frustrating. In my opinion, this board from the outset has been dismissive and lackluster in its response to the concerns originally presented. As the minutes from the January 6th meeting reflect, this very body, despite its sworn legal and fiduciary responsibility, has demonstrated no resolve to address the matters at hand. Instead, such specious claims like "it's not our place" and "what I'm saying doesn't pass the smell test" have been made. Since our last meeting on September 21st, I've had the opportunity to review the board's minutes from January 20th. Recall, this body never reached out to me about any action taken. For nine months, I patiently waited until I attended that September meeting. I was advised at this particular meeting in September last month that my concerns were supposedly addressed at the January 20th meeting. They read, in part, "Mr. Hadley reports that Chief Minich met with me and is getting me the information I requested." This is not factually correct. Yes, we did meet for two hours after I requested the meeting on January 7th via email to him. We would get together a few days later, on the 11th, and this discussion touched upon some serious matters, including Semlek and the two fraternal organizations at hand or in question, MasCOP Local 172, which is also known as the West Boylston Police Association, a union nonprofit 501(c)(5), and the West Boylston Police Benevolent Association, Inc., a 501(c)(4) tax-exempt social welfare organization. Despite the lengthy discussion we had, there was nothing definitively resolved to negate my concerns and the information presented. So it was disconcerting to learn when how the chief wrote in an email on January 19th to administrative assistant Nancy Lucier that he was providing me the information I asked for, and I was supposedly all set. Chairman Hadley initiated this email thread on the 15th of January entitled "Did You Meet With Craig Shibley and Is He All Set?" Because Hadley wanted this on the select board's January 20th agenda, the very meeting I was never informed about. Furthermore, I've learned how Mr. Crowley, a professional accountant, reached out to Semlek's accounting firm the day after my first appearance on the 7th, presumably to gain an understanding of this nonprofit law enforcement council and my initial concern of there being two FEIN numbers associated with this entity, which back on January 6th, he readily dismissed my concerns, making the bold claim that the FEIN is "irrelevant." Despite the fact, for those that aren't aware, the FEIN is a unique nine-digit number signed to a business by the IRS for identification purposes. Mr. Crowley, in his professional opinion, would then also determine once again, there's nothing wrong claiming the task force, which is a private nonprofit corporation, was under the fiduciary purview of the town of Charlton. That the private corporation had their own fund setup, he would go on to state, in the town, and it was administered as part of the town's budget, as if it were a revolving fund. This claim, to put it bluntly, is outrageous on many levels, and Mr. Crowley should know it. A municipality could not control a private corporation's money, period, legally, no way. And if some vague arrangement was made then, the taxpayers would have approved this peculiar setup back in '03. But once again, there's no paper trail. But according to Mr. Crowley, this was all a simple "paperwork issue," and when Semlek split from Charlton, they were issued a new FEIN. Well, here's the truth. Semlek, like other LECs across the Commonwealth, operated in the dark for a decade, and in some cases, even longer. They had a nine-digit ID number signed by the Secretary of State's Corporation or Corporate Division's office, which bears the identical look of an FEIN. Semlek, as a nonprofit corporation, never reported annual statements to the AGO's Public Charities Division as required by law during this period of being "in the shadows." In fact, the charities division had no records of its existence until very recently. As for financial control of funds, that would rest solely with the corporation, which by its own bylaw states how the executive board controls all money and it's the Central Region Homeland Security Advisory Council, which there are, what, four or five of them in the Commonwealth, will all form back in 2004. And that serves as the fiduciary agent to oversee the proper use of any federal or state grants awarded to Semlek, or at least it should have. Nonetheless, though, documents exist showing how the Executive Office of Public Safety, as it once was known, which is now known as the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, was awarding state-funded community policing grant money to this entity, the Central Massachusetts LEC Charlton Police Department, and, further troubling, depositing such funds into the municipality's treasury as of late as 2009. These funds alone total more than $200,000, according to public record. And, as you can probably imagine, some very powerful people were involved in these funds. As for the so-called new FEIN, as we'll refer to it as, that finally took place in 2013, but not before another peculiar development. In its effort to become legal, Semlek, with the help of attorney Jack Collins, who, as some of you may know, was the longtime general counsel of the Massachusetts Chiefs of Police Association, who also authored the organization's articles of organization back in '03, wrote a letter to the IRS in 2012 as part of its reinstatement, identifying their FEIN as That would be the same FEIN that they've always had gone by up until 2013, when they severed themselves allegedly from Charlton, which is not the case. The IRS would respond in a formal document to Mr. Collins and to Semlek with this statement: "The IEN number that you have supplied in the application is not found on the IRS records. Please provide the correct EIN that you obtained when your organization was formed in 2003." Well, for reasons unknown, the IRS never probed further. Rather, it simply assigned another EIN in its September 2012 application, was deemed to be one for reinstatement. Well, one can only be reinstated if you somehow fell out of compliance, but nonetheless, that is not clear on any level with these multiple IRS public record documents. They were just simply reinstated, and they were issued a new FEIN at that time. Despite the fact, though, I might add, that Semlek and attorney Collins never provided any definitive proof of another FEIN back in 2003, except for the one that the IRS had no records of. As a result, the so-called nonprofit organization existed in the shadows for almost a decade. Then there's the issue of the mutual aid agreement allegedly signed by 70 Worcester County communities and the Worcester County Sheriff's Department back in 2008. I qualify this statement because this community did sign it, but not legally. As confirmed by the town administrator here, there's no record of a discussion or vote to join Semlek back in '08, as I originally told you in the last meeting. Rather, Chief Minich and then-town administrator, Leon Goman, signed it, apparently in the shadows. This is very troubling on many levels. Legally, the town has no standing to be involved with Semlek, which then raises other questions of involvement of personnel, specifically Officer James Dugan, who is a SWAT team leader with Semlek. And what about Semlek's presence in this community as of late? I know of at least two or three call-outs that Semlek has had this past year alone, here in West Boylston. Without a legally binding agreement in place, how was this SWAT unit allowed to perform any law enforcement activity here? And as a result, the next logical question would be, would that legal action now be nullified? I suspect the Worcester District Attorney's Office, which gave Semlek the final approval of this mutual aid agreement back in 2008, would be a good place to start for a legal opinion. Then there's the matter of Chief Minich falsely claiming the board did in fact formally approve membership. In a series of emails to me back on April 20th, he wrote the following, and I quote, "The meeting you are referring to was approximately eight years ago. I have no recollection of attending that meeting. I rarely ever attend selectman meetings. I can only advise you that the document was signed by the Board of Selectmen, as well as the town administrator and myself. I don't receive meeting minutes, just the signed copy, that's all I needed. If there's any documentation on the meeting, it would have to be produced by the town." In a separate email that same day, he writes, because there was an email exchange, which I'm sure he would be able to fully provide you in his town-provided cellphone. "Craig, I stated that I have a copy of who signed it, period. Nothing more, nothing less. I sent you the copy. I don't remember going to that meeting. I may have, I may not have attended, that's all. If you have an issue with who signed it, how it was voted on, and with what authority, what records were kept, and who documented, et cetera, that's your concern, not mine." I responded to him. This is my response to him in this particular email. "I don't have a 'issue, chief,' but I do have serious concerns, as you should, being this community's chief. According to Semlek, records only a BOs member or a town manager could legally sign the document, as it should be. You and the town of West Boylston have no records of anything that was done illegally, yet you're quite dismissive of the facts for a cop, which doesn't sit well with me, especially in light of other matters we discussed. If there was a meeting, records would exist, as would a properly signed agreement, which we know doesn't exist." So, such obfuscation and deception, in my opinion at least, cannot and should not be tolerated by any law enforcement personnel, let alone this community's chief. When trust and honesty become an issue, no organization can survive, let alone function properly. As for the two fraternal organizations associated with the department, Chief Minich has likewise refused to acknowledge the financial documents which show how both shared the same FEIN number for years. Three members of the nonprofit in question still serve on the department. To briefly reiterate what I stated last month, the West Boylston Benevolence Association, Incorporated, like Semlek, operated in the dark for years with no accountability, financially or legally. They just existed. Such an arrangement would be ideal if one were to be, say, laundering money. This board's dilatory tactics and outright denial to address these issues must cease immediately. I'm requesting the board immediately withdraw from Semlek, not that that should be a problem since you don't legally belong to it, until this matter is properly and fully vetted. Similarly, I'm requesting an independent audit of these fraternal organizations during the period in question, which should include, to be comprehensive and independent, the U.S. Treasury's Financial Crimes Enforcement Network, called FinCEN. They're quite thorough, I hear, with the assistance of the Mass State Police, which could easily grant you access through the Fusion Center. In closing, I can only wonder how yesterday's vote may have turned out if this board had actively pursued my initial concerns 10 months ago and all these facts had become public then.
Submit this as evidence?
Documentation. I look forward to hearing it real soon.
Okay, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Craig.
Okay, next item on the agenda is September 21st, approval of minutes, September 21st, regular session.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, the other item is September 21st, 2016, executive session.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, the next item is payroll and payable warrants for the municipal light plant review and vote to approve for the period covering July 1st through October 19th, 2016.
I make a motion to approve the municipal light plant payroll and payable warrants from July 1st through October 19th, 2016.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Now, these are from July to October because we're just...
We have to...
We have to go back.
Back to July 1st, we have to go back. We already covered the school, sewer, and town government ones. We hadn't done the light plant yet, so in the future, it'll just be, all of them will be done together.
For the few weeks, right. Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? The next item is payroll and payable warrants for the town, school, and sewer enterprise review and vote to approve for the period covering October 6th through October 19th.
I make a motion to approve the payroll and payable warrants for the town, school, and sewer enterprise for the period covering October 6th through October 19th, 2016.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, and it's perfect timing. We have Anna Shaw from the library that's going to come up and speak to us in regards to some matters.
Good evening.
Aye.
My name is Anna Shaw. I'm the director of the Beeman Library. I'm here tonight to request approval from the Board of Selectmen to allow food for fines for the month of December. We were inspired by the holiday season, as well as a recent guest speaker at our library. Teia Ashkanazy is a 93-year-old Worcester resident, Holocaust survivor, and hunger activist. She came to our library on September 28th, and with our meeting room filled to capacity, she shared her story of resilience and survival. She reminded us that hunger is a very real issue in our community today. Each year between Thanksgiving and New Years, we collect food for the West Boylston Food Pantry at the library. This year, our staff wanted to take it to the next level by accepting food for fines. The library trustees voted to approve this program at their most recent meeting on October 4th. We would accept one canned or non-perishable item for up to $1 in fines on West Boylston items only. This offer would not apply to replacement costs for lost or damaged items or for fines from other libraries. Thank you for your consideration.
Sounds like a great idea. What do you have?
I think it's a great idea.
Can we...
Make a motion.
That's something we can waive the fees for that month?
I think you should take a vote.
To waive, so waive.
To allow the waiving of fees and the acceptance of food donations.
I make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Thank you so much.
Thanks very much.
And I'd just like to clarify, in your letter, you talked about the parking issue, but that's something we're going to work, talk to you about with the police chief and the DPW director.
Yes.
As we move forward, I'm sure the town administrator will keep you up to date.
Very good.
That's what we're going to do.
Let me know if I can help.
Next week, isn't there?
Yes, I'll be meeting with them next week.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And how is the work going with the... Is it all...
It's started. They've just finished most of the upstairs and the children's room, so Sue Smith is back in her kingdom, putting everything back where it belongs, so we'll be ready for the kids when we open on the first. They're going to start rip up in the main floor tomorrow.
Great.
We're on schedule.
Thanks very much.
Thank you so much.
We could still use their help.
Yeah, we could still use your help. We're moving the books. Thank you so much.
The next item is Christopher Olson, candidate for the vacancy on the zoning board of appeals for a term to expire April 30th, 2019.
Good evening.
Just identify yourself and tell us why you're interested.
Christopher Olson. I should mention at the top that I'm currently a member and the chair of the planning board. And I'd say my interest in the position is, it's really pretty straightforward, because I've noticed that there are four full members on the board now. I believe there's one associate member right now, and I mean, the ZBA is certainly, you know, a very important board in town for a variety of reasons. And it's probably, again, for many reasons, you know, not one of the easiest boards to serve on, but I feel that, you know, my professional background and my background with the planning board might be able to help me fulfill that role and serve the town in that capacity.
Okay, anybody have any questions?
I think with the experience with the planning board, they work hand-in-hand with the ZBA all the time, so I think this would be a great asset to it.
Can you just tell us, Chris, a little bit about your background?
Absolutely, absolutely. So, I'm an attorney. I've been a registered member of the bar since, say, 2008 or so, but I've been working sort of in the patent law, intellectual property law background for, I don't know, about 13 years now.
Okay.
So I'm a patent attorney at a biotech company in Waltham. And I've been there for about five years, and I mean, that's my professional background anyways.
And how long have you been in town?
I've been in town, let's see, we moved here in February of 2011, so just over five years, pushing six years now.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Thank you. We could always make use of your expertise in the zoning board of appeals.
Thank you, honestly, for the opportunity.
So you feel comfortable being on both boards and being able to...
And that's a great question, because there's a really important issue there that exists, sort of a separation of powers kind of an issue between both boards. And so, what I was thinking of, at least for the short term, you know, while I'm on the planning board as the chair, that there are some issues that have to come before both boards. I think the most recent example of that is 100 Century Drive, which is actually, next week, they'll be in front of the ZBA asking for a special permit, and they're also coming before the planning board for a site plan review of their parking lot. And so, in matters like that, I would, given that I'm the chair of the planning board, I would probably be most comfortable recusing myself as to the ZBA portion of that, so that I can fulfill my responsibilities on the planning board side. But I think by and large, most, you know, certainly more than half of the time, I think, at least as long as I've been on the planning board, issues that come up are sort of the ZBA or the planning board and not both. So I don't expect that to be an issue all that much, say, in the near term. And if you decided to make the appointment tonight, something else that I would certainly consider moving forward is, I might certainly have to reevaluate, moving forward, the planning board's role, again, because of that sort of separation of powers issue that we mentioned.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate that. Any, so no other questions? Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to report, Mr. Olson is on ZBA, permanent member.
Second. Okay, and I don't know if I read it all, but it's for, yeah, term to April 30th, okay. I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming forward.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Thank you for your work on the planning board, too.
You're going to be busy.
Yes.
That's great.
That's fine, that's fine.
A request for a transit vendor license for Christ Lutheran Church to sell Christmas trees at 112 Crescent Street from November 18th to December 31st. So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
You were right.
Consider signing Chapter 90 Project Amendment Form in the amount of $6,854.46 for the Lancaster Meadows Resurfacing Project.
Brief explanation?
Yes, please.
They found that when they were doing the paving on the roadway, that it needed some more leveling fill than they had originally anticipated that it would. A leveling fill basically just fills in the deeper hollows and holes, so that when they go to do the top course, it's a flatter surface. And it took more leveling course than they'd anticipated, thus the overage.
That road was an absolute mess, and they did a great job when they did it. I mean, whatever they did to it, it certainly came out good.
Okay, I have, I don't know if I have a motion.
Do you need a motion?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the $6,854.46.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Next item is recognize the acceptance of donations in the amount of $1,524.34 from the public for lost or damaged books and other materials, donations for the use of printers and copiers, and donations given to support of the general needs of the library, and to approve the expenditure of these funds for general purposes.
Do we have a motion here, or is it just...
Recognize.
Just recognize it.
I think we do.
We do.
We do make a motion every time, right? Yeah.
I'll make a motion to accept the donations and approve the expenditure of these funds for general purposes at the library.
Sir.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, and now we have a few invoices from the committee. Cardinal invoice number six for $5,850.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Nope. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? And then Reinhardt, invoice number six, for $4,620.
Make motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
None.
None, none, none. Meeting and invitations, October 23rd, fire department open house from 10 to 2:00. October 31st, Halloween trick-or-treat hours are from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. And then, I hate talking about this next one, parking ban begins November 15th through April 30th. No parking on the streets from midnight to 5:00 a.m. Also, no parking on the street during daytime hours when it would hamper snow removal efforts. Hopefully, we don't have to use that one.
Not after today.
I know. Future agenda items and our selectmen's reports, anybody?
Just a, is a push from the DW going to report pretty soon about all this, update the streets, what they've been doing and something like that.
It's still being on November 2nd meeting.
Excellent, thank you.
And I'm sure Siobhan agrees with all of us, before the meeting, we thank the residents of town.
Thank you.
And I'm sure you were on the same, sure you were going to say it anyway, but...
Very happy. I apologize for being late, Mr. Chairman.
No, that's fine. You did tell.
Yep.
And then, if there's nothing else, I guess a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Does she want to stay?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, thank you.
That was as fast as it was. That was as fast as it was.